All right, I call the Finance Committee to order with all members present. I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of a March 11 meeting. Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you. We have warrants 22 through and including 31 that I am making a proposal that we approve these. They are in the amount of $310,782.92. Is there a second motion to bring before me? All those in favor? Bob, that's all I have.
I have one bill that we received from Klinger and Associates in the amount of $1,500 relative to the crypto sodium project. And I would ask that we take that full counsel for approval for payment.
All right, this time we paid $57,645, but this is in addition to that.
Yes, this $1,500 is reference to their study report. And the total amount that we would expend on their contract is $33,000. What has been billed is $28,000.
Okay, is there any other information for the Finance Committee?
I know. The bill to DNR for this month, to Klinger and Associates, $14,188.57, and to Lehman Construction, $296,582.40, for a total of $310,770.97.
Okay. That should be taken to full counsel for approval. Is there anything else?
I've also given you the insurance rates for the health insurance. The insurance committee has met, which comprised of four employees, or five employees, and we have decided that we want to go with the AMPM option 7, RX option AJ, and the Blue Preferred option 3. The difference in the two plans is it raises the out-of-pocket for office visits by $5, and it raises the prescription plan by $5. But it's cheaper than what our renewal rates were for the same claims. So I need counsel's approval on that also.
Okay. Is there anything else to bring before me?
We need motion for operator.
We need motion for operator.
I make a motion that we take all three to full counsel for approval. Is there a second? All those in favor? Thank you. Is there anything else?
I have one thing just to appraise the outgoing counsel of what we're looking at for the forthcoming 13, 14 budget, is that we will not look at employee raises. However, we will look at increasing the amount that the city pays towards their health insurance. Because as it stands right now, and Sharon can correct me if I'm wrong, a single individual, just a straight-out employee, will be putting out close to $100 out-of-pocket expense each month. So I'm looking to, in lieu of a raise, normally what we pay per employee, full-time employees only, is $4,800 per year. I'm looking to raise that $6,000 per year.
Okay, you want me to take that?
That's not needed, that's just informational for those that are outgoing and those that are incoming.
Okay. Anything else? Something, motion may I try?
Uh, executive.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you.
I thought I had more people here, but I guess not so much. I didn't bring her, she didn't get home before 3:10. She was the guy, so I'm in the room. But I think I got here early, so I think a lot of people got here that I can make sure I have a spot.
Had a left short of you. She can't reach out with her bad shoulder.
It's at the edge of your hand. He's right. It's one way to be people, people sit up. I'll sit right by me. You're used to being in the public though. It's got sound. I get really warm. The ones that I was looking at on YouTube now, just to get them to my place. Usually they're kind of like up in the bigger one, or be up there. They don't even move. They just have it outwards, but it's the whole room, you know? I'm dying for Charter Internet to get up here. I can't even upload these. So I think the last one that I got uploaded, I think looks like it's on my girl, but I don't know. I haven't, the last, I didn't, um, March, the one that happened in March, I still don't know. I'm hoping maybe he thinks it's better to keep it. Well, I don't know, but I don't think it's gonna be that fast, you know? Because really, the only one that's really decent fast, um, is change. Even the ones that pay $50 a month a salary, it's there. Which is the V N A City, $30. But I did it, one man was like, okay, it's an H D, that's probably not, you know? About an hour, and I was like, and the same, it took about two hours, so. So I might have to take a trip down there. Just sit there, it's great. It's free, so.
Let us go. But I was doing things on the pages. Like somebody kind of puts a page down, and they give you numbers. And she was sharing, she was, she's a veteran, security secretary. As well as the past, so. So I wrote one of those to the chairman. And this new one, we put up a thing today, and we're going to add it. I thought, you know, I don't need to do this. I have no, uh... And John, the daughter, I'm thinking. And it was terrible. And finally, it was. But, you know, I was, it was nothing. To tell them, you know, the bank can't. She doesn't eat, she doesn't. And, and she loves sweets. So the basic diet is straight to the sweets. And you're a young man, so well, yeah. Um, my friend of the best friend. I just sit down, I couldn't see it, it was driving me crazy. What about the toilet? Oh. She was. But. Good, huh? They run my spot. So. I have to throw the worst stuff all the way across. Or, or.
Not necessarily, uh, but we can send by now. Okay, uh, is there a date that we can pass?
We're there.
We call the read order. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yeah.
Mrs. Hamper? Present. Mr. Hoffman?
Present.
Mr. Oakley?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Present.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
We now have implication.
Our gracious heavenly Father, again we pause to offer our thanks to you. Father, we are thankful for thy son. We're thankful for thy presence in our lives. Father, we ask for thy knowledge and wisdom to help us to understand the needs of our community, be with us, and guide our decisions that we follow in the path that we need to, and not only that, but that would be acceptable in thy sight. These things we ask in your son's dear name. Amen.
All of them got the minutes? There's no changes or, uh, okay. Okay. You got that. With the change, I entertain motion to approve now. Stand ready, yeah. All business.
Are your microphones on? We can't, we can't hear you.
Yes.
All business. Being done. Certification of the election results. Sharon?
Your letter dated April 4, 2013, from Pike County Clerk Melissa Kempke. A contemplation on the canvases and palpulation of the results of the general municipal election held in Pike County, Missouri on Tuesday, April 2, 2013. I hereby certify that the results of the political subdivision are as stated on the attached sheet. Ward 1, total votes 169 votes. Anne Hanford, 73. Salvador Police, 7, uh, 96. Ward 2, total votes 122. Kathleen Smith, 75. Don Oakley, 47. City Louisiana Award 3, total votes 159. James Minor, 64. Bart Neener, 95. City Louisiana Award 4, total votes 108. Buckle Stevens, 103, with five write-ins.
I entertain motion to approve the certification. Motion made, second.
What's the motion?
Motion.
Well, you have to state what it is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make the motion that we accept the election results.
Have a second. Second, Ms. Young Woods. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamper? Yes. Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
So be it. So at this time, I need a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoffman. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamper? Yes. Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
So we stand adjourned, and we'll square up the new candidates, or the new elected. So all of them need to come forward, and Sharon will give a note of office.
Well, I'm sitting right here. Okay.
I need to take a sec. Ranger, right now, while I send you a bill in your name in your office that you're there. I share your course.
I will.
I solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications for the office of State clerk.
I solemnly swear that I possess all qualifications for the office of county person.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I was torch a constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri.
That I support the constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class.
The provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances of the city of Louisiana.
And the ordinances of the city of Louisiana.
And faithfully to be myself in office.
And faithfully to be myself in office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Call the council order, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Neener?
Here.
Mr. Police?
Here.
Mrs. Smith? Mr. Stevens?
Present.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
For the first business we have, we'll elect a mayor pro quem. I'll let her give you some notes.
I make a motion to appoint Kathy Smith.
Let's both appoint this. Okay.
Eight seconds of those. Yeah. Second.
On the sales motion, we got a second on, second by Larry White. On, sorry. Okay, all right. Those in favor of the first motion we have is Kathy Smith. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
No.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Neener?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
No.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. White?
No.
Okay. So we need that motion failed. So we need to have, uh, we'll call the roll, we call the roll, now we have a motion on Sonny Stevens. We have a second, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
No.
Mr. Neener?
No.
Mr. Police?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes. Okay, we have a tie, so I'm, tie vote, I vote for Mr. Stevens. Okay, we have committees in front of you. Entertaining a motion through the committee.
I make a motion, we approved a new slate of committees.
Second. Motion made, second, call the roll.
Is there a, a point of information? Is there an area for discussion, and have a second on that motion?
You can discuss any one.
Um, it, I'm curious to ask too, because it's, because it's clear from 110, 110, that you're to do this with the concurrence of the city council, of whether you solicitor or interested in our interest or our input in the composition of these committees.
No, I did not. It's my job to pick them, and it's your job to pick them. And you can, your selection will either be vote against it or vote for it.
So you do not want any input from us on that?
No, that's the American position therefore. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Neener?
No.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith? Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes. Motion passed. Okay, reading and hearing, attention to the other committees. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed it. At this time, we'll open the new council to the audience. Anybody wanting to address the council, make use of at this time. Mr. Cohen.
Representing the Louisiana Ministry of Alliance, Colonel Cohen. Kerry Cook is here with me. Uh, on Thursday, May the second. That's the National Day of Prayer. And years past, we have had observance for this, uh, event at the riverfront. And we would like this permission to do that at seven thirty in the morning on May the second. If the weather is not good, we would like to use this room. So I think that would, we would need your permission to have that event at the riverfront as well as to here. So that, you know, place can make to do that. And in addition to that, we would also ask that, um, representatives from the city, all the city council members, police chief, anyone from the city, um, would be invited. And if there would be a proclamation that, uh, the mayor would make on this subject, we can come up with some wording on that. If that's your wish. So, make the request, and I'll read questions about the request.
What time, sir?
Seven thirty a.m.
I'd make a motion that the Ministerial Alliance be allowed to use the riverfront gazebo. If the weather is not good, that they could use council chambers for their May second World Day of Prayer observance.
National Day of Prayer.
National Day of Prayer, excuse me. I second that motion.
Motion made in second. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Neiman?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes. Okay, if you.
If you would be willing to make a proclamation, I think Kerry Cook and I could come up with appropriate wording if that's what you'd like to do.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to address the council? If not.
I have a request of, um, the Twisted Cat Outdoor Fishing Tournament. I'm requesting the use of the riverfront and the boat docks on August tenth. It is a night tournament.
I've got four scheduled already, I have to see if that conflicts with any.
Okay, I have a proclamation for Young Child Week. Whereas the Friends of the Louisiana Library and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the week of the young child, April fourteenth through the twentieth of two thousand thirteen. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities which are crucial to the growth and development of young children and to building better futures for everyone in Pike County. And whereas all young children and their families across, across the country and in Louisiana, Missouri deserve access to high-quality early education and care. And whereas in recognizing and supporting the people, programs, and policies that are committed to high-quality early childhood education as the right choice for kids. And now therefore I, Thomas W. Wallace, Mayor of the City of Louisiana, do hereby proclaim April fourteenth through the twentieth as the week of the young child in Louisiana, Missouri, and encourage all citizens to work and make good investments in early childhood in Louisiana.
Entertaining a motion? Come on. Call the roll.
Who's second?
Uh, my second.
Another proclamation, after this, after we take this vote, we'll go back. Better take care of, uh, Mr. Cohen's and Eric's.
To make that proclamation. Are they gonna provide, are they gonna provide wording?
They'll be with the chair. I just need to, so we can.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Neiman?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Well, I support this, but my wife is involved, so I'll abstain.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes. I'll entertain that motion now. Alliance, Minister Alliance. Proclamation. Somebody make a motion.
I make a motion. Allow you to sign the proclamation for the next day.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Sally.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Neiman?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes. Okay. Any other communications on the head?
Um, and I, I know this is a topic that's foremost on every citizen's mind. That being getting a grocery store. As I mentioned last week, uh, another grocery chain had contacted me. They were able to look at Alps, they were not able to look at Kroger at the time. Um, he looked at Alps, uh, that is by no means or any way in any shape to be occupied. Uh, there's water in the center of the store and there's mold throughout. This same particular grocer was able to look at Kroger today. Uh, he is very much interested and he will be in the process of negotiating with them. Also, at the same time, I sent an email to Neiman Foods. And this is, uh, the latest update from them. It says, "We're taking baby steps, but it does appear to be getting closer on an agreement with the landlord to the shopping center. We hope to have a conference call this week to get these last couple of points resolved." So you all know as much as I know.
Yes, sir. Let's say that those two coincide with each other, what would happen in that situation? With, with the new supermarket that's coming in and it's Neiman's decide that they want to come in as well?
Is there some, uh, that'll be negotiations between Rawl Walters and the two prospective grocers. Will we hear about that in time? I will keep you updated. Thank you. As I learn information, I'll be more than happy to pass it on. Uh, the only request I have had from the second grocer is that it remain anonymous until there is something positive to be brought forward.
This is there. Oh, I didn't see it. At this time, I'd like to make two presentations to the councilmen that are going out, councilpersons. Uh, I'll call Ann and Donna. Uh, certificate of appreciation is presented to Ann Hanford. Where she has served, first, she has served faithfully as a member of the council for one year and has played a vital role in the important work of the council. Now therefore I, Thomas Wallace, on virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, speaking on behalf of the entire city council and all of our citizens. You hereby tender Ann Hanford this certificate of public recognition. Uh, Don, same goes to you, I'm not gonna call you Carlos, I'm gonna use Donna. Whereas Don Oakley has served you well as a member of the Louisiana City Council. He has served faithfully as a member of the council for two years and has played a vital role in the important work of the council. Now therefore I, Thomas Wallace, on virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, speaking on behalf of the entire city council and all of our citizens. You hereby tender Don Oakley this certificate of public recognition. Okay, no other, the communication, we'll go with committee reports. Finance, Mr. Sal.
Excuse my stumbling around, obviously this is my first week, so bear with me. Ms. Hanford called eight thirty at five thirty P.M. With Ms. Hanford, Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Wood present, also present were Mr. Jenny, Mr. Jenny, Mayor Wallace, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Johnson. Ms. Hanford made a motion to approve minutes of the March twenty thirteen meeting, seconded by Mr. Stevens, all voting yay. Ms. Hanford made a motion to bring forth the council paying more twenty-two through thirty-one, twenty thirteen, in the amount of three hundred ten thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-two cents, seconded by Mr. Hoffman, all voting yay. Uh, I make a motion to pay those more twenty-two through thirty-one, twenty thirteen.
Second.
Second.
Motion made in second, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Neiman?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith? Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Jenny stated that he has a bill from Klinger Associates for fifteen hundred dollars for the water plant with cryptosporidium. The contract was for thirty-three thousand dollars and twenty-eight thousand dollars had been billed. We make a motion, I make a motion to approve that payment as well.
I second it. Motion made in second, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Neiman?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Since Ms. Sharon is literally my name, I'm Ms. Corrus. If Corrus.
Okay.
Is it Corrus? Can I just say Sharon?
Yeah.
Ms. Sharon stated that she has a bill from Missouri DNR for the wastewater plant project for Klinger Associates in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents, and Lehman Construction in the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars and forty cents, for a total of three hundred ten thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars and ninety-seven cents. Uh, I make a motion to approve that payment as well.
I second that.
Second, right, yeah. Motion made in second, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yeah.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Neiman?
Yes.
Mr. Popovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Sharon stated that the health insurance is up for renewal in the insurance committee meeting and would like to change the insurance to Hampton Blue Cross, section, option seven R X, option A J, and will lose preferred plus option three R X, option A J. Ms. Hanford made a motion to take to full council paying fifteen hundred dollars for the water plant, cryptosporidium, paying Missouri DNR for the water plant project to Klinger Associates in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents, and Lehman Construction in the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars and forty cents, for a total to three hundred ten thousand, seven hundred seventy, seven hundred seventy dollars and ninety-seven cents. And to accept the insurance committee's recommendation for the health insurance, seconded by Stevens, all voting yay. Mr. Jenny stated that he is working on the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget and would like to raise the amount paid by the city for the insurance to six thousand dollars and will raise to the employees. Ms. Hanford made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Wood, all voting yay. Meeting was adjourned at five thirty-five P.M.
Thank you.
We have to make a motion to accept these insurance and the pay awards.
Can I ask? Yes.
Yeah.
On the insurance, make a question.
And the leave.
May one.
Those have to be approved by full council. So I make a motion to bring that full council to vote?
Can I just question, or if you just make a motion to approve it?
To approve it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question before we? Yes. Can we find out? I don't know, somebody can. What percent of money have we paid Lehman? Or what percent of work have we got that on the list?
That's a good question.
That could be accomplished.
They take their way ahead of us. They are. It's all I can.
Uh, I make a motion to approve the changes in the health insurance.
Right, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Neiman?
Yes.
Mr. Police?
It's Wallace.
Wallace?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm new to. Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes. That's the end of the table. Polish. Okay, fire committee?
For our fire committee, uh, appears they met on April first. They approved their minutes from previous meetings. And there was no additional, uh, action or activity by the committee.
Thank you. Police committee?
We met and approved our minutes from the last meeting. We stated that the prescription drug take-back program was set for April the twenty-seventh tentatively in the parking lot by the old Kroger building. And that's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Streets and hours, uh, made a motion to approve minutes from the last meeting. And I really had nothing. Other than, uh, finally more about to ditch out of Dollar General.
Yes, I did finally get in touch with the inspector for the area, he called me back today. And he said he would not have a problem with us filling that and extending that pole back. He said after we completed their project in all, in all likelihood, they would come back and probably replace that pole and reposition it.
Uh, if you look from Kelly Lane West, um, uh, Georgia Street, those two tubes they put in are not lined up.
Right.
One of them's gonna wash out underneath the street. The, the one, the south is gonna wash out, the way it's pointed is gonna wash out underneath the street eventually.
Well, if we took.
About half the pipe is, is, is.
The way it is, but if we put our extension on it and banned it, it won't do that.
You can put the, yeah, okay. And I didn't ban that, anything else but the, uh, guardrails.
He did not call me back, but a perfect gentleman is here. Mr. Lin, if I can put you on the spot, do you have any guardrail?
For me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, if I can get with you tomorrow and get a price on that?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Billions of grants. Motion was made to approve the minutes from the last meeting. It was approved. Mr. Hoffman stated that the library hosted a commercial venture for a company that was purchasing gold coins, the Saturn. He stated he had a problem with them hosting the event and the library not being paid. The library board did not approve it. There was discussion on the matter and it could be looked into. Mr. Elliott had questions about the contract for the pool. Mr. Jenny stated that the only section that was changed was section sixteen.
Mr. Jenny stated that the only section that was changed was section sixteen. Mr. Elliott asked the city manager to be changed to be city administrator, and that paragraph five, section A, be clarified. Mr. White inquired about the new general dollar store. Mr. Jenny stated he had bids to extend the culvert in the front of the building and to put up a guard rail. Mr. Jenny stated he applied for an extension with FEMA for a removal of the concrete that fit at Tennessee Street in the city branch. Mr. Jenny was contacted by Tim Carter concerning the empty lot downtown in the old Rexall Building. He informed Mr. Jenny that if the city would seal the outside of his building, he would consider pushing the lot for a reasonable price and assume all maintenance responsibilities of the project. That's all I have.
We back up a little to the library.
As if I can, um, Danette came in today and said the library board would be meeting tonight, and they were gonna outline a policy on how to make approval for these different events that they may oppose. So that should rectify the situation.
That was what I was going to report along with. Um, I mentioned to the library board that the city wanted the library board to make these decisions, not City Hall. Day-to-day operations of the library are under the control of the library board, period.
Large chat question.
I'll, I'll drop the question, Sunny, go ahead.
Okay. Oh, I have, going to, um, to Tim Carter and the new Rexall-
I was gonna go through the whole list.
Well, I was just gonna say, um-
And that's a decision that needs to be looked at later on when you all, now that you're on board, you can take time to re-reflect on it.
Yeah.
It does not have to be accomplished tonight.
Right, I was just gonna say that since it's city property, it would have to go up to the-
It would be discussion, however you wanna do.
Okay.
Um, with regard to the pool contract, I've been in touch with Marcia Garrison. Marcia will make those changes, uh, make the change from city manager to city administrator, and she will clarify the activities that they are responsible for. Again, on the new Dollar General, I got in touch with the inspector finally today, and he's looked at it. He has no problems with what we're intending to do. The extension with FEMA, that's been approved. I received approval to go ahead and complete that project. So now it's just a matter of arranging for either renting or having someone, hire someone to bring in a track hoe and remove the rock from the base of the town branch. And I've already addressed the thing with Mr. Carter, so-
Paul, can I ask you one other question?
Sure.
On the Dollar General, we're putting up that, putting in that culvert, and I realize we just, you know, you talked last week about, um, trying to straighten out. Is that something that D N R. should be made aware of, since you were talking about-
Already contacted.
Okay. Wonderful.
I've had a question on the softball field, is that appropriate now, where we're at on, um, on the softball field?
I'm, I already made my reapplication to Major League Baseball. Uh, I sent my letter of inquiry back to them last week, so I'm just waiting for a response. And they were, it was done pretty quickly, I'd say within a month. So, I, there was- As soon as I hear something, I'll let you on.
Well, there was a concern about the Corey League, and how that was back, the, the Corey League players, and I don't know if that was ever mentioned, we're talking about-
Well, I, I brought up the Corey League, I've all been in touch with the president. I've asked them to provide me, the way our ordinance reads, it stipulates that they have to provide the city with four thousand dollars worth of in-kind services, whether it be referees, whatever, this, that. I made a request, I gave a deadline of a week ago, last Friday. That deadline has not been met. I've had one call, he asked if he could have a slight extension, I said it would be through sometime last week. I still have nothing from-
So basically, you were just requesting that down paper for you to look at?
Because they did not do it for last year and the year before. And that's information that our auditor likes to look at.
Okay.
So they're analyzing the problem, and then the high school and everybody else gets thrown into the Baileyway.
So you put you, so you gave them an opportunity to-
And I'll be happy to provide you a copy of my communicate right now.
Anything else? Ready?
Yeah. I've addressed everything.
Okay. Uh, water? We met April first, we approved the minutes from March meeting.
Yeah. Regards to the wastewater plant, they've poured the other exterior foundation wall. And the only part that's left is the north side exterior wall, which they should complete and form this week. Then, once that's accomplished, our timetable should be fine, we're out of the flood risk. Because those exterior walls will be, will be completed.
Since we're on water, and this has a little bit to do with water, sometime back, you talked about getting pluggings from down there.
I still have a proposal that I have on file from an outfit that was willing to do it, so, and I can bring that to your attention.
I think that's, that's it. Okay, thank you.
Grant committee?
Mr. Stevens made a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, Mr. Oakley seconded, and all voted yea. Demolition grant is pending, and actual start date has not been provided yet, it needs to be put into a motion as quickly as possible, as this has been pending for some time, yeah. Nothing yet?
No, done. The, uh, if you'd like, leading the committee, council, I, uh, the start date is, uh, April the eighth. Today was the start date, they have to have the job completed by June seventeenth. So they should be starting sometime this week, more than quick than-
And they will probably, the first demolitions will be up on Van Gogh's Hill.
Thank you. Mr. Jenny received a letter stating the city was awarded six thousand dollars for the recycle benches grant. He stated we would receive six eight-foot benches, two eight-foot W C A. picnic tables, and four eight-foot sickle tables. And the total cost is fifty-seven forty-eight, which will be covered by the grant, there's no match funds that have to be provided. The H V A C. grant that was applied for was denied due to the fact that the project was already started. Mr. Jenny received a letter from M. Albee stating that they need more information on the grant application, that he will provide that information and resubmit the application. The grant for the engineering study for the water tower at the industrial park is still pending. So can you-
What?
The grant for the water tower at the industrial-
Yes.
That's all, Mr. White.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance committee?
Ordinance committee was called to order, and the minutes of the previous meetings were approved. Mr. White seconded the motions, all voting yea. Mr. Adams also submitted some information to the council concerning commercial grease scraps. As there is no B. schedule or commercial inspections, this cannot be voted on at this time. And I think we have a couple of ordinances pending, and I would guess that, Mrs. Corrus, we'd like to have them done as soon as possible.
Uh, I understand that we'd like to complete them as soon as possible, but I believe, uh, it, it's in conflict for the referring committee not to be the same as the city council. Uh, section one-ten, two-forty states specifically even underlined, any referring committee must assist with the current city council members. I believe this has come up in the past at this time during council changes due to the sequence in which we do things. So I actually think it's against the ordinance for us to actually proceed tonight with that vote, which I bring up primarily because it highly needs to be addressed long-term in the way that we do this, or in the ordinance itself, not because I have any objection to these, but I believe this is a problem.
We could solve this by having a work study, and then a official council meeting would happen, that's supposed to, I understand.
You would have a public, most of the elements I believe are needs criteria for the special section.
So, we, can we set up a work study at this point?
I'm not necessarily means a work, need a work study, it's just a committee meeting.
Yeah.
And they go into a process.
Right, okay, we'll call it a committee meeting. And the committee that will meet would be myself, Mr. Elliott, Mrs. Smith, and then Mr. White. And then following that, we have an official council meeting to get a clarification.
Right.
We have a date that works with you people. I'm available anytime.
If I have to do this, I can do it tomorrow night.
I can do it, well, no, you can't.
Yeah, no, personally, yes, we're up.
Yeah. Yeah, it has to be after six thirty.
Friday? Sal's just Friday.
I can be here Friday.
Want to back it up, Thursday?
Thursday?
Thursday, I definitely can be here, I'll be out of town, so-
I will be as well.
Are we Monday?
Perfect.
I, I can do Monday.
Monday? The fifteenth?
Fifteenth?
And Sal will be back in town till six.
Well, I can be here by Thursday.
Okay, five thirty.
What did you do that?
April fifteenth.
Okay.
Five thirty. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Council meeting immediately following?
Yes.
With that, I have nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any resident, I see, we go to special reports. The city administrator's already gave notice. Human relations, I don't see anybody from that commission. Board of adjustment?
I have none, sorry.
Okay. Induction resolution, which we don't have. Hugh Benner's?
Um, I wrote this one out because it concerns me, and I checked it out with, uh, the M M L., uh, so I would be very open to discussion if you please on any of these points. But I would like to make a motion, uh, as it is the intention of the standing committees to be such that they address current meaningful municipal concerns, and as the structure of our committee has not been revisited for some time, and as there are a number of possible restructuring options available, which might better suit the current needs of Louisiana, and as section one-ten, one-ten intends cooperative action on committees regarding these subdivisions of the council and their appointments, I move that we establish a work study with the full council and mayor to the purpose of revising unnamed committees, their function, and appointments made thereto for the direct purpose of better serving the people of Louisiana. And given that we've already found, uh, time that works for everyone, I would propose that we do that in conjunction to these very brief meetings that we already set up on Monday, April fifteenth. So that's a motion.
Okay.
A second.
Motion made in second, call her up.
Discussion.
Yeah, I do, uh, what, uh, can you, like, change this around a little bit?
Potentially, my understanding from my conversation with M M L. is that the committees are there to address whatever the concerns are. Some of them you expect to be pretty standard and static, such as the water committee, uh, and others can be manipulated to address things that are important, such as economic development, communications, issues that are maybe more important. What I noticed is, and what prompted this is, as you can see from tonight, fire has nothing, police has nothing, but I can imagine that someone like a public safety committee, which had a broader breadth, would both address a larger concern, more relevant to everything from buildings to, you know, all of it, and perhaps be more effective for our city and citizens.
If you would check back, yes, this time the police committee had very little to report. In the past, they've had as much, if not more, than most of the other. This is an isolated case, not in every time occurrence.
I didn't, I didn't mean to pick on police before that, what I mean is that, I think most of what I hear in most committee reports tends to be a regurgitation of the minutes, almost verbatim, that they are not summaries of the critical issues that really should be addressed by the council and the mayor at this kind of a meeting, and if perhaps there's room to make for some more important, larger topics about economic development or overall, you know, larger issues than the price of turkey and, uh, you know, et cetera. We can do better by examining the way these committees are structured and, and operate.
So, uh, before, we'll, if, if, if we, I'm gonna vote to change committee to the vote-
No, just to talk about it, purely just a work study. This is very much, I, I, I wanna know, I, I very much extinguish this as an invitation to cooperatively, not really brainstorm this thing.
Well, the committees established titles nearly years ago, and they haven't been revisited for years.
Exactly so.
And there could be economic developments. And like I asked, the council considered, when you was here, uh, hired a economic developer?
I don't know.
Person for the city, and also joined P C B A.
Yep.
So, uh, that's one committee we could change from. Uh, we still have, the committees were formed to actually help, like, the fire department needed a spokesman, so we made a fire committee. Ordinance committee was, they were researching and coming back. That's why these committees were formed, it used to be we had no committees. Okay, that's good, and you're gonna have it the same night as we're gonna have the work-
That's my motion, wait another second.
Follow and be better to see. All right.
No second.
Motion made in second, call her up.
Mr. Elliott?
I hope yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Neener?
Yes.
Mr. Sal?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Smith?
Yea.
Mr. Stevens?
Yea.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm old, but, uh, I get told they keep hearing me, I'm too old and stowed up, I can't get over getting this thing, we need longer-
We'll get some longer courts for it, 'cause it is, they are short. Yeah. Yeah, we'll get you fixed up.
I have one more. Sorry. Uh, this is a very simple one, I was trying to do some research as I was looking at committees on appointments in general, and, um, maybe Sharon can, can help with this, or, or the attorney. Uh, what is the process for appointment, for appointed officers, such as the attorney? We, I can't find that in our actual municipal code, is that in a resolution, or is that in an uncodified document someplace? What is the, where is it described, the process by which this city goes through to appoint its appointed officers?
Yes, it's, it's in, uh, seven-seven, N O S.
Thank you.
Okay, media clarification?
Are you ready, guys?
Please go ahead.
Playing with a new toy here. Um, okay, the demo grant-
Okay, the demo grant, that's supposed to start April eighth and conclude on June seventeenth, is that right? Okay. And then in the recycling grant, you had six eight feet, what? What all did you get in the recycling bench?
That was a scrap tire, and basically what they do is they make, make these benches out of composite scrap tires.
Uh-huh.
Wheelchair accessible.
Thank you. And then, uh, copy of the committees, of committee assignments. Okay, I have it tonight.
Yes.
Um. Ah, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, first of all, uh, when you talked about increasing the amount the city pays for health insurance, actually there was some, you talked about increasing it from forty-eight to six thousand. Is that for the plan that's currently underway, or for the plans coming up for the new budget?
Plans coming up.
Okay. And I wasn't completely clear on, um, what the, what or, uh, ordinances would be, uh, discussed at the work study?
The codification of the ordinances that were passed last year for the TOEFO.
Okay.
And the ordinance to take out of the agenda the, uh, closed session.
The closed session thing is about? Okay.
My, uh, who makes up the insurance?
Uh, let's, it's employees.
Five employees.
And, but is there any members of the council on that?
No.
Or from the city administration?
No.
Okay.
Just Sharon. Only city clerk.
I'm fine. That's all.
I'll entertain a motion, we do.
I have a motion to be affirmed.
Motion made in second, call the roll.